Johnson from Calvary Free Lutheran Church to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Holy Father, thank you for this beautiful spring day, for the wonders of your creation that we can see here around us, living in Fergus Falls. Lord, I thank you for the members of the city council, the mayor, administrator's staff. Pray for your blessing on them and their families. Lord, they deal with challenging, sometimes controversial topics, both in the council setting and with constituents. I pray that you would point them to the truth of your word, calls us to get rid of all bitterness and anger and malice, and instead to be kind and compassionate to one another and forgive each other, just as you have forgiven us in Christ. Lord, I pray that you'd give them good communication and discernment in decisions they make, even this evening, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 on May 15, 2023, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremzat.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Couple notes. Councilmember Kwame has requested that item number seven be removed from consent, to have a little discussion about that. And then Councilmember Kwame also would like at the end to make an announcement in recognition of a couple of National Honor Society students for their recent work on Lake Alice or near Lake Alice, so he'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Thank you for that. And with that, I would also... Mayor, if I may, I'd just like to add something under old business, if I may. What would you like to add? What I'd like to do is talk about the mediation. That was discussed earlier, I think, at the last meeting. So I believe that what was discussed at the retreat is any business to be added would be at the unanimous consent of the council, so is if there's any, anyone that feels that we shouldn't talk about that? See, no one? We'll add it. So unless, yeah, okay. We'll have to have a procedure going forward, I guess, whether we vote or not, but we can add that under old business. So, see, now I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as amended.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Anthony, thank you. Brent, I favor that motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign that motion carries. There are two public hearings this evening. First is a final cost hearing for public improvement 6079, which is the 2022 sidewalk and driveway improvement project. Brian Yvar, City Engineer, good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Yes, this is, in regards to public improvement 6079, this is the 2022 sidewalk program final cost hearing. Upon the conclusion, I'm going to be requesting you open the public hearing, but just a little background, this is 100% petition project initiated by owners throughout the city. Individual final assessments were sent to the assessed properties. We had a total of three in this last year's program. And the final cost hearing was also published in the Daily Journal prior to opening this meeting at May 15, 2023. Just to give a little background, once again, this is the 2022 sidewalk and driveway improvement project. Locations miscellaneous areas throughout the city. Today's the hearing date, we'll be opening May 15, 2023. We have an interest rate of 5.25%. The terms are variable based on the amount shown. So the total amount assessed to property owners is $4,898. So at this time, I'll just open, Your Honor, request you open up the public hearing for this project.
Thank you, Brian, and we will do that at this time. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to the public improvement 6079 city sidewalk and driveway improvement project for 2022, please step to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. See, no one will close the public hearing. This is back to the council. We'll be looking for a resolution to adopt the final cost assessments for public improvement 6079.
I'll offer that and have a comment.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ruffer. Go ahead, Scott.
Just a question for Brian, actually. This amount that's been listed as the final cost doesn't use what we've budgeted, and so if we've got a citizen out there that would like to still be added to this program, is it, is the program closed as of this, or what would be the process if somebody says, oh, I missed the deadline, I want to do that, how do I get in on it, or is it too late?
In regards to the 2022, it is too late, but I believe it was the last, or council meeting, too, we set the rates for the 2023 program. So, as mentioned, they can contact staff member Troy Howie in my department, he manages the program, and he can work with the homeowners, developing a petition for those homeowners to sign.
My mistake. This is for last year's, what was done last year, what they'd bill for now going forward? So if they want to be in on it this year, that's still possible?
Yes, yes. I just want to know, we do have some carryover from last year, just because we had contractor availability matters. We're still honoring those prices at the previous rates. The new rates for 2023 did increase slightly in that, but, just like a lot of things nowadays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Item number two is a housing tax rebate public hearing, program, public hearing for 1323 and 1340 Lenore Way, 3405 Pebble Hills Drive and 3620 Pebble Hills Drive, and I will call on community management, community development manager Clara Beck for any comments before we open the public hearing. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, we have four public hearings tonight. You can, I think you can roll them all into one, but I think you should vote individually on each application. Two of them are Habitat for Humanity homes over on Lenore Way, and then two of them are single-family homes elsewhere in the community, slightly larger builds. And if you have any questions about these projects or the program, please let me know.
Just a question, well, let's open up the public hearing, then we can open up for questions. So, thank you, Clara. And with that, we will open up the public hearing for tax, housing tax rebate programs for properties 1323 and 1340 Lenore Way, 1305 and Pebble Hills Drive and 3620 Pebble Hills Drive. That's what happens when you try to speed things up and talk fast. Anyone wishing to speak to the, any of these properties, please step to the lectern and state your name and address. See, no one, we will close the public hearing, and this is back to the council. For the properties on Lenore Way, just to clarify, they're Habitat for Humanity, but this, this housing rebate goes to the new owners who are taking ownership and paying the taxes and having mortgage on that property, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep, it transfers right over to them.
Yep, great. Thanks for that. So, with that, we would be looking for a resolution for each of these properties. Would someone like to offer a resolution for the property tax rebate for the property at 1323 Lenore Way?
I'll make that, then I got a question.
Sure. Thanks, Brent.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jim, thank you. Go ahead, Brent.
These are, are we going to be doing these all as one, or are we going to be doing individually?
These are individuals.
Okay.
So if this is first, this one, this roll call will be just for 1323 Lenore Way?
Okay.
Okay, everyone ready? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Someone like to offer a resolution for 1340 Lenore Way?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second him.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Next property is 3405 Pebble Hills Drive. Would you like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you. Jim?
Second.
Second. Mr. Ruffer, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
No.
A resolution is approved. Last property is 3620 Pebble Hills Drive. Would you like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Kwame? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
There's four votes in the affirmative, I'll break the tie by voting yes, that resolution is approved. Under awarding of bids, we have no bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, we have a proclamation declaring May 21 through the 27th as Public Works Week, and I'll read this. I wish Guy Taylor, our Public Works Director, could be here this evening, but...
And we have a little slideshow while you read that, Your Honor.
All right. Well, so I don't get to watch it, huh?
You can figure that out.
Whereas public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, cue the music, please, facilities and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Fergus Falls. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings, park systems, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, now be it resolved that I, Benjamin Shad, the mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby designate the week of May 21 through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and I urge all citizens to recognize the substantial contributions to public works employees that public works employees make in protecting our nation's health, safety, and quality of life. With that, I just think we all can say thanks to our Fergus Falls Public Works employees and to Guy Taylor for leading that department, so thank you. Under the consent agenda, this evening, there are 10 items remaining. If we remove item number seven, if anyone would like to discuss any of the remaining 10 individually, we can do that by removing them, and if not, we could, we can pass the remaining 10 items with a single resolution.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution initiating public improvement 9353, Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Master Plan and AOP Update, accepting HDR's independent fee evaluation for professional services in the amount of $4,000 and accepting SEH's proposals in the amount of $364,200. Scott?
Thank you. I'd like to offer that resolution.
Thank you. Would someone like to second?
I'll second.
I have no issue with this. I guess it's a motion, isn't it? I...
No, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution? Okay.
You're good.
I don't have any issue with it, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Since it's for 300, nearly $365,000, when it's on the consent agenda, that might make some people think, that's an awful lot to just fly through without a little discussion. But the good news here is that of that $364,200, the city's share of this cost is only $36,920. And I thought it would be important to understand that the federal government is providing 90% of the cost of this project. And it just demonstrates how working with the federal government on projects like this that benefit our town, it also demonstrates the value of the airport to the wider network of airports and their facilities around the country, and it is a good example of the need that we have to continually invest in the maintenance of our city's assets. And I just thought it would be good to make a few comments in that regard.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott. And I think to add to that, too, that this master plan and this planning allows us to continue to get federal funding for the airport and to continue to invest in that, so I think your comments are spot on. Thanks, Scott. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance 37 eighth series, which amends the city code, chapter 90.24, relating to noise violations. We've had some discussion on this at committee and council, we've made some changes, if there's any...
I got a question. At the committee, we talked about trying to identify, like, if this is on the outskirts or this is downtown or in a residential area, and I wonder if we should put some language in there that, you know, about the level of noise? Because if you're kind of down, I mean, this got brought up, obviously, because of Otter Tail Power Solar Project, which is not really going to affect, you know, but if this was kind of next door to my house, you know, you know, do I have any rights as such? And that would be my only, you know, if it's noisy, then, you know, before, obviously, it was kind of like they couldn't do it, now, now anybody could do it.
But isn't it just amending the hours? Like, this was a Saturday morning, right? Just going from like nine to, was it eight now?
Yeah. It's, it's now, it's, instead of saying that you could start at, obviously, I'm assuming, and now it's, you can start at eight o'clock in the morning.
And they could always start at nine, it's just allowing them to get an extra hour on Saturday, so.
But I think...
You're saying, like, aside from the changes we're making, should we add something additional on top?
That, you know, I mean, is there, is there a kind of an element of, like, not recourse, but I mean, if somebody doesn't want their neighbor, you know, knocking on the roof at eight o'clock in the morning, you know, what do they, how, how, how do they go about it, basically?
I know the one time that we had a business operating, we were able to, you know, businesses, which is, it's different than construction, but we were able to put conditional uses around, you know, the permit that they received to operate in a residential zone. That's one way.
I guess my question would be, is that, has that been an issue? Question for city staff, I mean, how have we handled it in the past?
We do have a nuisance ordinance that it would fall under, and the nuisance is generally described as, you know, could be vibrations, it could be noise, it could be just about anything that bugs anyone, and it could be addressed if it's a persistent, you know, recurring matter that it could be looked at from a nuisance perspective and charged out criminally.
I mean, as long as there's a format for people to follow.
Sure. Jim?
Could we have a nuisance filed against the city? Because at the corner of Lincoln and Union, in the early morning hours when they're removing snow, my understanding is there's a pile of noise there that keep people awake in those apartment buildings right there.
I think the ordinance exempts out snow removal.
Yeah.
It does.
It does.
Just thought I would mention it, because, because we do ourselves make a lot of noise at times.
Yeah. No, I know, I've received calls, 2:00 AM in the morning.
Snow removal is exempt.
Street sweeping.
But, but also, not just for the city, but for all contractors, snow removal is exempt.
So...
But we can always...
No, as long as there's a, as long as there's an option for people.
If it's, if it becomes an issue, you can always come back and address a specific issue.
Everyone good?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Rupert.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
That resolution, I'm sorry, that ordinance is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a project application to Lassard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Council for Lake Alice improvements, and again, we'll call on our community development manager Clara Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this is a program through the Minnesota State Legislature. It's the Lassard-Sams Program. I do not believe the city has applied through this program before, but it is for projects related to the restoration, protection, and enhancement of wetlands, prairies, forests, and habitat for fish, game, and wildlife, and that prevent forest fragmentation, encourage forest consolidation, and expand restored native prairie. So this is at the urging of our lobbyists that we look into this program and make an application. We have a Lake Alice project that has been sort of sitting on the back burner for a few years. It was put forward for a grant, grant round back in, I think, 2018, and we think it might be a good fit for this program, and that we're well-positioned to make an application this time around. It would be for grit chambers to help to capture pollutants before they make their way to Lake Alice. We're still kind of exploring exactly what an application looks like and the exact program fit that we would be applying for through the Lassard-Sams, but we would like to take advantage of the opportunity, if possible. And Brian knows more about the grit chambers than I do, so if he wants to talk about them specifically, he can. But any questions?
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb and think that Scott has a question or comment, but I have one before you get there. Maybe I got you. Is this for the entire watershed, watershed, drainage area? What's the term I'm looking for? Water?
Watershed.
Watershed.
Watershed for Lake Alice, which is a big area. It's a big section of towns.
It virtually goes up to the RTC.
Yeah. Is this, is this specifically for just around the lake, or is this, you know, is this larger than...
I'm gonna ask Brian to answer that one.
It primarily, yeah, for, perhaps, for the northern, so if you're calling a northwest, northwest corner of Lake Alice, there's two large culverts up in that area, near Park Street.
Got it.
And back in, back when we first reviewed, we were looking to put an inline grit chamber, grit chamber being like a 10 by six box culvert, 120 feet maybe in length, still to be determined, beneath the road, in line with a storm sewer, to catch all the sediments and everything. So we'd have to look at what's all in that storm network, but it's pretty vast.
But it's, it's, I see, that makes sense. I thought you were talking about grit chambers overs manhole covers around the lake, but this is actually where they collect and where they enter the Lake Alice.
Yes.
It's a lot more extensive than a cover. Got it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Other questions?
Basically, that was kind of through the DNR, and as, as Brian said, there was, we looked at two, two chambers in each corner, and the idea was, obviously, that all the runoff would go in there, then the solids would settle out, and then the water goes over, over and overflow into the lake. So it would help stop, catch, it would catch a lot of the sediment that currently goes into the lake prior to that. This might actually help us get then a DNR grant, because the DNR wouldn't give us anything until we, till we do something, so...
Right. I remember that, up in that northeast corner, so, okay, thanks. Someone like to offer a resolution approving the, Scott?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Joe. Yes.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Freymeyer.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving updates to the single and two-family property tax rebate program, and again, we'll call on Clara Beck.
Didn't sit down this time, so checked the agenda beforehand. Okay, we have been talking over the last several meetings about possibly some updates to the property tax rebate program, and based on our last conversation, I've included the options that we sort of narrowed it down to, and so tonight, I'm hoping you can take some action for applicants moving forward with the program. I did get feedback before this meeting that potentially the opportunity for rental properties to be part, to be considered part of the significant rehab portion of the program is maybe not something that council is interested in. I'm happy to remove that. I would just maybe like to have somebody offer it as, with an amendment saying that it would be removed. So any, otherwise, any questions? And then, and then maybe we should also talk about the cap, which right now is, is at 500,000, but I think there could potentially be some wiggle room based on discussion, so thoughts on that?
Brent?
Yeah. I know when we started this whole thing, it was quite, you know, that nobody wanted it for rental properties, and that's something I'm still not, I will not go for as far as rental properties are concerned. And also, the cap, I'm looking more at 400,000. I mean, five, 500,000, some of the contractors I've talked to, they say the average, just for a basic house, you can't build it for less than 2 to 250, and it's getting to a point now where I just want to have this basically helping people on lower incomes. And so, I mean, I won't, if, for 400,000 and no rental properties is the only way that I'd probably go forward with it.
Cap of 400?
Yep.
Question, I have a question. So the significant, the term significant rehab, and I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but are we gonna require that it's rehab in, to the extent that it increases the property value, like, so it's either...
That'd be the only way they'd be getting any money back from it, is if it, so they would have to...
Above, above their current?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That answered my question.
I got a question.
Should, Brent, did you want to make, if that's your...
I was gonna say, do you want to make a...
You want to make a resolution?
Yeah, I'd like to just make the adjustments of removing the rental properties and putting the cap down at 400,000.
There's a resolution to that effect?
I'll second that.
There's a second? Thank you, Laura. Go ahead, Anthony.
My number is 350, but I can live with 400, so, but I think for the same, the same logic, and I, I don't have any issues with the, the rental property, other than, obviously, you know, it does, it does improve a building, but I think if we're going to have, like, a significant improvement, there should be some sort of percentage, because if it's, if the property is only, say, 2,000 is gonna lift it to, say, 2,500, then that's 10 years. I know cap's at five currently, but I think there should be some percentage increase to the value that we should have.
For a significant...
Yeah, to, to define what is significant, whether it's 50% of the, of the current property value. But I think there should be some mechanism that somebody knows what they're getting into.
Okay. Yeah, I would maybe lean on the assessor's office to help us figure out some exact language on that. And I think what we would require in our program is that before they would make an application to the city of Fergus Falls, is that they would talk to the assessor's office first to ensure that what they're proposing for their property will benefit them in a way that translates to a benefit through this program.
Sure.
When would this go into effect?
When would this go into effect?
I would say if you vote on it tonight, it would be any applications coming in after the, today, the 15th.
I mean, my idea of a major renovation, I mean, years ago, like when I bought my house, I mean, you used to be able to get them for a song. So then you're getting the land, you're getting hopefully a nice straight house, a good foundation, and you literally could get it. And as far as a major gut, I mean, I'm talking literally gut the darn thing, because most of these houses have outdated or knob and tube wiring. They have cast iron, you know, plumbing inside, which is outdated and doesn't work. You know, the insulation is either very little and not there. I mean, but the problem you got now is with the market, the way it's going is some houses like that are going sight unseen, $100,000, you know. And what I was trying to hope for is for a young couple or basically a low-income family to be able to go in and buy one of these houses that's in distress, but the structure is sound, be able to go in there and get it for a song, and then literally just take the thing back to the studs. I mean, you should be able to, I mean, most of the people I've talked to usually be able to do a complete renovation on the inside and outside once you have that for a hundred grand or less. You know, so, I mean, then you end up with a house worth considerably more than what it started. Because if you just go in there and leave the plumbing and don't update everything, it's really not going to drive the price up that much. But if you go in there and just tell yourself you're buying the land, the foundation, and the frame of the house, you can do, and the value will go up considerably.
Thanks, Brent. Maybe, well, you know, we have a resolution at 400 and exclude rental properties. Maybe what we could do is, we can vote on that with the understanding that staff's gonna talk to the county assessors and come back. We can always amend this as we go, but, you know, we can get the program started and, and as we start to get these applications, but see what, because I think there is some nuance there with the way they classify properties, you know, by the age and by the improvements and the useful life, et cetera. There's different classifications. So I think getting some input from them of what, because I think your point, Anthony, is accurate. We don't want to be giving away tax more than we're gonna get in and rebate. But at the same time, we want to encourage people to, to make those investments in their homes. So with that, is everyone okay with coming, you know, voting on this tonight? Then we'll come back at some point if with any recommendations on the definitions behind that. Scott?
Just to understand this, the program that we started with, we came from the county, and it's that $5,000 per house incentive program, right?
Yep.
But the way this was written in our notes was council agreed to explore a separate incentive program for first-time homebuyers. So is this suggestion to create a new program or to modify the existing one?
This suggestion that's being discussed tonight is just to modify the existing program.
Okay. Because I can, it sounds to me like what Brent is describing is a new program.
Well, I'm hoping it's not. I, I was kind of understanding, they're bringing up the, you know, the major remodel, but from what I understand, this was still adjustments to the original program.
Just wanted to understand it.
I think it's putting some parameters around the existing program and then adding some, also some new categories.
I just think, I think it's a move in the right direction. I think that's a good idea to, you know, look at 400,000 or 350. I think it's a good move.
Thanks. Other comments? There's a resolution in a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Tonight, under claims, we have a presentation of claims of $2,47,872.11. Anyone have any questions? We will direct them to our city finance director.
I will offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thanks, Jim.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. There are also no reports from staff or administrative officers this evening. A couple items under old and unfinished business. First is a motion approving the recommendation of city council and charter commission subcommittee to review the proposed code of conduct policy for elected officials. Just a quick reminder, council on Wednesday morning asked that we put together a list of council and charter commission members. Staff talked to charter commission leadership, and I think it was their indication that they didn't feel like that was within the scope of their duties as the charter commission, and so they respectfully declined. I still went ahead and put together four names that I want to bring forward for discussion. We have a chair of the charter commission, Sparky, am I mis, am I interpreting that accurately?
I'm here for questions.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Thank you for being here for questions, Sparky. But the recommendation that I'll bring forward for discussion is still for council members. And those would be Scott, Kwame, Scott, Rachel, Laura, Jobe, and Tom Roof. So it's up to the council where you want to go with that.
I'd make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anthony?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Then I have a question.
Jim? Yeah, go ahead, Anthony.
I, I think the one thing that I would like to see is that, I mean, as much as I, I hear the charter commission saying that they, they don't want to be involved, I, I think they are involved by default. Because, you know, one of the reasons that this came up partly is, like, at the beginning of this council year, we had 3125, and that is in the charter. So there's an interpretation between, you know, how the charter is written and the interpretation by the council. So I, if, I, I appreciate that they don't necessarily want to be involved in, you know, the kind of this piece of it in terms of writing the policy, but I would like to see them end up being somewhat of the, of the, of the wise people in the room. So if there is a conflict, you know, between council members, that maybe the charter commission can be that neutral body that, you know, gathers the information. Because I think it's unfair the way that the conflict is currently written, where the city administrator in Andrew has to be that arbitrator, because he has to work with us all every day. And so I, I would like to see if there's, within this code, that, you know, the charter commission take on board that role of being the independent body to look at something and make the decision or, or at least try to make some sort of resolution out of it, rather than it falling on the, the shoulders of the city administrator. That would be my own comment. I think, you know, at the end of the day, if, if we write the policy and then we govern the policy, that's kind of like the fox in the hen house, you know. And I think that neutral body of the charter would be a positive thing for all of us.
Thanks, Anthony.
Yeah. Also, too, just to kind of go with what Anthony said, too, is I still remember back a few months ago when we had an orientation to new council members. And if I remember correctly, city attorney Nicomel had mentioned to us what the charter commission kind of does, they're kind of a governing body that writes these things. And am I correct in saying that, Rolfe, or what did? I'm trying, could you explain that, because you did it very well?
I mean, what you're referring to, City Code Section 31 is, is not the charter. That was a code that was enacted by the city council, and the city council is in charge of the city code, and the city council is the one that makes laws of the city code. As it relates to the charter, the charter is like our constitution, and the charter is our founding document, and it is charged, the charter commission is charged with overseeing, providing the oversight and review of the charter, the constitution of Fergus Falls. And that's, you know, when you think of larger issues such as our structure of government, we have a, sorry to say this, Mayor, a weak mayor, strong council type of government whereby the mayor, as you know, doesn't get to vote, except in the case of a tie. The mayor does not have veto power. The mayor is, is here to run our meetings efficiently, and he's also here for ceremonial purposes, too. And he's our representative of the city. And so when it, when, when you look at some of these larger issues, the charter commission is the one that reviews the charter. Now, they also have some statutory duties and obligations as well, and I may need to take a look at that to see whether there's any wiggle room to include them beyond the, the charter. I think there may be some, but I, again, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an independent body. They, they have significant powers. They can recommend changes to the charter, and you can either accept them or not accept the changes. But if you don't accept the changes, they have the ability to force a vote and force a citywide election on the charter. So I get what you're saying. It's, I, it's nice to have more eyes reviewing, reviewing some of these things. And I get what you're saying is that, is that, you know, that the more people that are, that would look at this and help out in, in this, but it, but it returns to the council as the council is the one, and I think I used this term last Wednesday, is the council is the one that has to take ownership of this, because this document is intended for you to hold each other accountable, to have questions answered within it, but it's your document. It's, and, and so I have, I have no issue with the charter commission being involved in it or not being involved in it, and I think they have the ability to, to make their decisions as, as to whether they think this is something in the purview of their, of their duties. So take that for what it's worth.
Yeah. Thanks, Rolfe. And I guess, yeah, I, I too understand what you're saying. It's nice to think that there's an independent body out there that's gonna be able to arbitrate for us. But at the end of the day, I also think that the argument is that we're the ones that are elected by the people. So I think that ultimately, we're gonna have to figure this, some of this stuff out and have a document that makes us accountable to one another. So anyway, these are things that this group that we're appointing can, can take into advisement if they'd like, come back and make a recommendation that we can discuss as, as the council. That, so, okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. A motion carries. Thank you. And finally, this evening, Mr. Kremeyer asked to add a item under unfinished business regarding mediation?
Yes, just kind of touch base on that once again to clarify a couple things. You know, it was, the mediation thing came up between me and Brent Thompson. And I don't, what had came up recently here is I've been thinking, and so has the people who have made the complaint on that issue, is that they are actually willing to have a mediation with council member Thompson. When we first spoke, I happened to be privy to a meeting along with city attorney Nicomel and, and Bremseth, city administrator. And during that meeting, at that, at that meeting with us, and I was asked to be there on behalf of the person of the third ward, Dr. Michael Mortenson. And at that meeting, it was brought up that I, uh, city attorney Nicomel would be trying to facilitate or get us a, get a room over in the police department for a place to visit where Dr. Mike Mortenson could visit with council member Thompson over there. That meeting did not happen due to the fact that I think with that sworn affidavit that was presented after that, so that meeting did not happen. And I, if I believe administrator Bremseth was agreement to that, that it would have to be a visiting between them two would be a good idea. So in light of that, what had came forward was the two complainants, Dr. Mike Mortenson of a resident in Ward Three, and Mark Layton, resident in Ward Two, the two who had the complaints, would welcome and the fact that there could be a mediation between them three with the person from the Minnesota League of Cities. They have one request, if possible, that there would be, if the League of Cities has a attorney there to be there to make sure everything is documented properly. And the, that's what was the request that they, I wanted to bring forward tonight. Thank you.
I think we need to refer that to staff to see if that's even a possibility with the league staff. I mean, I certainly don't think we're going to, I, I guess I don't know if it would be allowed from the league. I mean, I think the league offers mediation services between council members or between staff and council members, to my understanding. So maybe you could just bring back a, some, some rules around that and give the council a time, some chance to think about that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any, any other comments there? Does that sound all right to you?
Yep.
Mr. Bremseth?
Can I just, can I just comment? I think that we need to do what we can so that we can move forward, for sure, at this point.
Thanks, Laura.
Is the, Your Honor, is the council open if, if the league can't do that? Because I could see for fairly obvious reasons why they wouldn't mediate disputes between a resident and an elected official, especially free of charge. Is there the desire for me to seek somebody else out? Or is it, you know, that's kind of the option? If it works, it works.
You know, I, I would like to just know the league's stance on that, whether they do or not, because I think that'll tell us something right there, whether they do or don't do that, and give us a chance to think about it. If you want a immediate response, I certainly don't, I'm not gonna spend any more taxpayer dollars. We've already spent taxpayer dollars on this, so I'm certainly not in support of spending any more taxpayer dollars. But if you could bring back what the league is willing to do and what they need recommendations that they have.
Just one more comment. You know, they're, they're very, very willing. They do want to meet. And if that can be done, it's some way, somehow. And I don't, as far as taxpayer money, I think that if there was taxpayer money, that would be very well spent to get that cleared up, because we do need to move forward. And I think this is about the only thing that's gonna do it, is when the two complainants actually can talk to the other person. Thank you.
Your Honor, I got just one thing.
Yes, Scott?
I, you know, the council, when we sat in that retreat, we talked about mediation between Al and Brent, and I think that's where we still stand. And I, I just assumed, I mean, I would like to see the Mortenson and Layton come in, too, but I think we just, we asked for that, and I think that you should reconsider that, to sit down and just talk it through. It doesn't mean we're just gonna, we're gonna act on anything. It's just talk it through the mediator, and, and I know Brent will, and let's move on from that, too. And then if we can get Layton and Mortenson in, I'd like to see that, too. But I think the first thing we did was to get this mediation going between you two, and I think we should honor that.
All right, well, we'll have Andrew. Thank you, Scott.
I don't want to go back and forth, but I do want to make a comment. It is not between me and council member Thompson. It is between the two complainants and Mr. Thompson. And Scott, I still don't know if you know the, this gravity of how this was designed or what happened, that there were two separate complaints, and, and I don't think you've got that.
No, no, you said A and B. I understand it completely, but when you, I said a council, I'm sorry, Ben. Us, the council, wanted you two to sit down and mediate. That's what I want. That's what we decided together, and that's all I want. I don't want to, I don't know how I want to say it, I don't want to muddy it up. Just sit down and talk to it.
And we don't need to go back and forth. But just, I, I will say, both of those issues, both were taken to an attorney locally. One was taken to an attorney locally, one was taken to a three-panel judge from the campaign finance. Both of them caused taxpayers' charges at the local level and at the state level. They were both decided, they were walked away from. We said we're moving on, and we didn't. And that's when the mediation came back, because we didn't move on from that. So at this point, I think we can let Andrew bring it back, but I'm certainly not going to be spending any more tax, be supporting spending any more taxpayer dollars on this issue that has already been resolved by a three-panel judge and by a local attorney. I don't think it's Mr. Thompson that's not moving on from this. Please, Al, and then we're gonna be.
You know, and, and that's what, one of those reports, too, is to look closely at that investigation or, or what supposedly was done there. The other thing, too, is we don't have to spend any taxpayer money either. You know, this could be done, I would think. I can see that, you know, people are upset about it. But keep in mind, I brought this forward for other, this other person. Mark Layton brought it on his own, on his, I just want to make that very clear, because I don't want to, I don't want to admit to something I did not do.
But, but, but legal processes were followed, and there was determinations based on legal processes that were followed. I mean, so let's not, like, you know, this is not just something that's up in the air. It hasn't been resolved. It's been resolved at the state level and also locally. So I think the council has said we want to move on. So keep bringing it up, I, I don't think we're able to do that. But we'll ask Andrew to bring back from the League of Minnesota Cities what the options are. There's nothing else to come before?
Your Honor, Councilor Kwame wants to acknowledge students.
Yes, sorry. Scott, please do.
You've got some other announcements, too. But the one announcement that I wanted to highlight was to pass along some thank yous to a couple of young people who last week were out around Lake Alice with some paint and some stencils. You see the pictures. And the stencils say, "Save the lake." And this was something that was actually done a few years ago, and it's now done again this year. We're working with Matt Harrington in the city public works department. This is an effort to try and bring an awareness to people about where the water goes and when the runoff comes out for their yards, whether it would be from pesticides or spills in the, in the driveway or whatever it might be, that that stuff ends up in the lake, and it can be a real problem. So these kinds of efforts don't cost a lot. I wanted in particular mention Sloan Peterson and Abigail Stregge for their work last week, and then their teacher, Elizabeth Abrams, who apparently was involved as well with arranging for this. And we thank them, and we congratulate them for their public service.
Thanks, Scott. Speech, speech.
This is one other announcement that I would like to make. Town hall meeting at the public library this Wednesday, the 17th, from 6:30 to 8:00. And thank you, Gail, for letting us have it there.
Thank you. Any other announcements that you'd make, Ray? All right, with that, we're adjourned.